approval of the minutes of the June 11, 2020 work session.
Okay.
But you know what? We need to call the roll. Yeah, why don't you call the roll? I apologize.
Okay, no problem. Roberta Abdul Salam. Robbie Ash.
Yeah.
Robert is on there. Hang on, did you say?
Yeah, did you hear me?
Okay, here we go.
Okay.
Okay, Robbie Ash. Jim Durritt.
Yes, ma'am.
Rodrick Edman. Bill Floyd. Bill Floyd.
Oh, he's on mute.
Whoa, I'm here.
Yeah, you.
We can hear you now.
Rodrick Fireston. Ryan Glover. Jerry Griffin.
Here.
Rita Hardich.
Here.
Alicia Ivy.
Present.
Russell McMurray. Al Pond.
Present.
Rita Scott.
Present.
Christopher Tomlinson.
Here.
And Thomas Worthy. Okay, Madam Chair, we have 10 board members that are on the line. Now 11. Dr. Edman just joined us.
Okay, great. Good afternoon. So can I now have a motion to accept the minutes of the June 11, 2020 work session?
Don't move. Griffin.
Second. Durritt.
Okay. Are there any that are opposed? Are there any extensions? The minutes passed. Okay, the report from the chair is pretty brief, but I do want to remind you of all the upcoming meetings. And I know that there this Saturday is a ribbon cutting ceremony in Clayton County. And I think you received an email this morning giving you the information for anyone that would like to attend. The Audit Committee is July 17, 10 a.m. The External Relations Committee is July 23 at 10 a.m. And the Planning, Ops and Safety, and Business Committees all meet on July 30 at 9:30. There have been two surveys that have been sent out to the board. The first one was a software survey as they're trying to get us close as we can to doing some virtual and then once we're back in the office. But if you have a moment, will you please fill that out? I think they're still waiting on a couple people to fill out their survey. And if you can't find the survey, let Tanya or Tyree know and they can help you with that. Also, we still have a couple board members. We are trying to plan a diversity training workshop for us. And the email was sent out to you by Tyree on Monday, July 6 at 12:47 p.m. If you could reply to that email, I would greatly appreciate it. So I think at this point, that's all of my announcements and I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you. I have a couple of presentations. Before I get into that, I just want to do, I just want to mention that the US House of Representatives did pass House Resolution 2, which is a $1.5 trillion infrastructure program called Moving Forward, the Moving Forward Act. Included in that is a $494 billion transportation, surface transportation, excuse me, reauthorization program. And that includes $105 billion for public transportation and $60 billion for rail, which includes commuter rail, Amtrak, and high-performance rail, what we used to call high-speed rail. This is a, you know, I think it's a significant step forward in a very, very long process. It is a, it's a bill that is extremely supportive of transit. I do believe that the total, someone told me that the total investment over this six-year period would be, if it was put into law, would be larger than previous investments. So this would include a very, very strong continuation of the Act to a New Starts Program. And so we're really excited about that. It is, for all intensive purposes, dead on arrival in the Senate. The Republican House members, it passed on a nearly partisan vote. The Republican House members are very concerned that it was developed not in a bipartisan way. But nevertheless, I think it's important that I point it out to you because it, you know, it is where the House wants to go. And clearly, the House has, you know, shown an interest in investing and supporting in transit. And that's such a great thing. It is, I know, you know, our important friends on the highway side are not as excited about this bill as the transit side of the businesses. But, you know, like I said, this is a step in a long journey. And part of that journey is more than just the bill itself. You know, we haven't dealt with the funding of this either. So there's another significant effort that needs to take place. But things are moving forward in Washington. You know, no one expects that anything is going, anything meaningful will happen before the election in November. So a little update on that. I do want to spend most of the time talking about two, you know, an extremely important issue and then another important issue to the region and to MARTA. And the first is a update on COVID-19 at our New Normal Task Force. And then I'll present a little bit of information where Gwinnett County is and bring you up to speed on really the work that MARTA now is doing, needs to do, and ultimately will be something that will come in front of the MARTA Board of Directors at a later date. So next slide on this new normal task force, please. We, as I have shared previously, we convened a task force really to focus on where we were going in the future as it relates to our employees and our service. We brought this group together in May, a very broad group within the organization, clearly focused on business continuity as well as operational readiness, building upon the things that we've been doing to react and trying to create a path forward to get us to a more sustainable and, you know, and position of, you know, that we would be implementing for the long run. We look to have some clear recommendations for the group in early August. I will, you know, I will say we're obviously reacting to the world we're living in. And when we started this in May, we all kind of thought that this was all headed towards a downslide. And we all know that we're clearly not there today. Significant increases in, you know, in the virus here in Georgia as we've seen in the news. So that may, you know, change our ability to have a clear-cut path forward in August. But that's what we're working towards right now. Next slide. You know, setting the case, we're going to talk about this in two parts. Employees as well as our operation. Very similar to what's going on in the country and in this state, other states around the country, particularly in the South. We were at sort of a, you know, a number of employees contracting the virus seemed to be relatively stable. And then the month of June hit and we have had a clear escalation. I believe we're in the high 80s now for the number of employees. And one of the, you know, one of the things that is an early indicator is, you know, we do have a form that people who are out sick are filling out, the supervisor intake form when people call them sick, trying to identify early symptoms of the virus. And the number of people turning in forms is definitely spiking up. So, you know, the work that we're going to do in this new normal task force is really trying to create a, you know, a future-proof service level in employees and make sure that we're adjusting and recognizing the needs of particularly our employees. Next slide. So important to ground ourselves in what we've done in keeping employees safe is critically important. These are some of the items that we've been doing. We've been keeping both our employees up to date about this, our stakeholders, as well as the board members through our situational updates that we're sending out and you're receiving. You know, town hall to gather input, telework has continued, making sure that our frontline employees have wipes and gloves and sanitizers. And these are the things that we've been doing, continue to do and for the foreseeable future, will continue to do to make sure that our employees are kept safe and we're being focused on making sure that we're paying attention to the recommendations of the CDC to do just that. So next slide. So the task force is not just putting together a report, but we're, you know, we're identifying actions that we need to be taking and implementing to be able to continue a level of safety for our employees, but also recognizing that we do have a significant number of employees who are working from home and making sure that their workplaces are taken care of, are focused on, and allow them to come back in a safe manner, but also in a way that makes them feel comfortable. So these are some of the additional members, measures that the task force has undertaken and implemented to date. We have two temperature check pilots currently underway. One which is a much more formal one in our IOC that is making sure in a very controlled way that the people who work in that vital area are not bringing an illness through temperature checks and some questions. And then we're also piloting at Armory Yard Rail Facility, more employee self-checking, checking by the supervisors and checking of temperatures. So that's going well. We are going to prototype and there's a picture of it. It looks like a magnetrometer, but it's actually a temperature device. So employees would walk through there. If a temperature was identified, we would do some further scanning with some handheld devices. And employees who were found to have a high temperature would be, you know, asked to go home sick. Clear following of CDC recommendations will continue. We have completed a pretty significant employee survey to see what are the important issues for the employees who are returning to work. We're now working on a survey for the largely our operations staff who have continued to work and help to identify the needs of those from their perception. So we don't just want to, you know, implement things that we believe are in alignment with CDC, but trying to listen to the employees and making sure that we're hearing what's important to them. Focusing on some improvements to our air filtration system. Connie Krusak is working on that and something we're going to do. We haven't completely defined the scope and the cost of that, but it clearly is something that we believe we need to make some improvements to our air filtration system that would make the filtration system be more effective in filtering out viruses and mold and things like that. Looking at and planning on doing some office configuration to ensure that we have social distancing when people come back to work. And Dave Springsteen's group in facilities is doing what we call the Clean Start Program. Picture there of one of the sprayers that we got in conjunction with Delta Airlines and making sure that we have a very clear regiment of additional cleaning, not changing any of the baseline cleaning that has been going on in our system, but making sure that we have a clear additional cleaning level within our office environment. So next slide. One, you know, one additional thing before move into our customers. You know, we have identified several locations, some of them that are very, very close and are encouraging our employees to get COVID-19 testing. We've put out locations that are convenient to our work locations and identified them and are encouraging people to test themselves. But we're also being very mindful of the, you know, particularly the recent, you know, concerns around difficulty in getting tests back. And we're, you know, we're leaning on public health officials who haven't made a clear-cut recommendation to whole-scale testing of employees at a regular basis. We haven't moved to that. Not going to say that we won't get there at some point in time, but as we talk to public health officials and contemplate what should be done, that has not been a focus yet. Part two is clearly our customers. This is slides that you've seen, which depict just our ridership. We do have a, you know, significant decline and, you know, see a trend of increasing our, you know, ridership. You know, one of the interesting things that we've been looking at very, very recently, and I want to be very cautious of drawing conclusions, but it's worth talking about, is, as you know, we've cut and stopped running a significant number of our bus fleet. And that happened in April. Bus routes, I mean, and dedicated those, the fleet to a smaller set of bus routes. And when we look at the bus routes that we're running and compare the ridership post-COVID of just the routes that we're running to those, just those routes pre-COVID-19, we actually experienced about a 12% increase on average ridership on those routes. So, you know, we're looking to, you know, to draw some conclusions about what's going on. We do believe that clearly people are changing their commuting patterns because they're moving on to routes from routes that aren't being run anymore. But we also believe that the higher frequency that we put on these routes are making those routes more convenient, more attractive for our customers. And people are simply using the routes because of the, you know, the convenience. And clearly, the, you know, the rear door boarding and the advent of free fares that's affected by that may have an impact as well. But I think it's, you know, sort of a bit of a silver lining and, you know, potential thing that we need to consider as we move back towards more normal service, that this additional frequency on our busiest bus routes is seeing an increase in ridership. So, next slide. So keeping our customers safe, what we've done, a lot of social distancing initiatives on the buses with placards and signs on the trains, the bus full headers, the essential bus routes, the 41 bus routes that we started running only those routes on April 20. The changes in the rail service and a pretty extensive focus on additional vehicle and station cleaning is what we will continue to focus on. But what the new normal, next slide, the new normal task force is looking at is, you know, where we're going from here. One of the things that we need to do and have been working on is focusing on how we are changing and had some questions by the board members very recently about this. So how we've been changing our service patterns. April 20, we did start with 41 routes. We've identified areas where we can add routes back into the system, done this three times by adding a total number of five routes back incrementally. We will continue to do that. We've shared with you previously the rationale and the weighting of the essential routes and the rationale around the service area that we're serving, the needs of that service area, the pre-COVID-19 ridership and complaints are sort of our driving factors in terms of prioritizing bus routes that will come back. And we will, the process that we've been doing is using that as a guide to see where we need to make the investments. We are constantly monitoring the ridership of the existing route, seeing where we can move some buses out of the additional, the doubling of the service off of the bus route, verifying that we're not getting ourselves into a situation where buses are full and we can't maintain social distancing. And once we've verified that, we're applying those resources in a prioritized way. So probably early August would be the next time that we would potentially make some additional bus route improvements. So next slide. The measures that the new normal task force is focusing on is, you know, one of the things that we've heard is the inconvenience with restrooms. And we're working on a change in our plan. We've closed a significant number of the restrooms to protect our employees. Having the ends of the line rail stations, Five Points and Lindbergh Station, has open restrooms looking at, with the advent of additional masks being worn, our employees wearing masks and looking at a policy change to reopen some of our restrooms and provide that convenience back. Customer surveying, working on a program to do some customer surveying to gather opinions using, you know, using our research and analysis group to understand, you know, the opinions of those who are currently riding, those who used to ride and are no longer riding, and those who have never ridden, and help us in driving decisions around sort of where we go in terms of future services we implement a permanent service change in the future. We found and have prototyped and are moving towards putting some antimicrobial filters on our buses and trains, pretty low cost, changing these filters at the same frequency we've been changing them, just a filter that is more effective. Dave Springsteen's group has recently prototyped and, well, I shouldn't even say prototyped, constructed some large-capacity hand sanitizers that are being installed in every rail station. We'll go back and see where the usage is heavy and install additional hand sanitizers. But relatively quickly, we'll be having hand sanitizers available in the paid area of our stations. And we also recognize a real need to increase the wearing of masks within the systems. And that's led us to a pretty significant program. Next slide. A focus on making sure that we can improve the, you know, the percentage of people that are wearing masks. We did some early analysis where we were seeing numbers on the lower end, around 35%. Our research and analysis group did a little more sophisticated survey, largely watching people getting on and off vehicles. So this is probably numbers are maybe a little on the low side because as people are coming off a bus, they may have already slipped the mask under their chin. But these are largely people who are getting off of our vehicles and we see about a 50% number. If you average all these bars out, we get to about 50%. So next slide. Knowing that an increase in that compliance with the CDC recommendation is needed, we, you know, we have put together a pretty significant distribution of masks. Here in Georgia, you know, we are probably one of the larger distributors of masks, you know, trying to get out 2 million masks over a period of time. I know the state of Georgia supplied to educational groups about 3 million masks several months ago. But this is a big lift and should really help to drive up awareness and as well as putting masks in the hands of people. And what we would hope to get out of this is a significantly larger number of people who are wearing masks. We're glad to see that City of Atlanta, one of our jurisdictional partners, and East Point, one of the cities that we serve in Fulton County, have required masks this week. And, you know, it's our intention to clearly conform with, you know, with those executive orders and require masks alongside the jurisdictions and also trying to increase the uses of masks. So we've gotten, next slide, we've gotten significant positive feedback. This is just some of the social media feedback that we've gotten from the public about the need for masks. You know, we do recognize, although we can all be perplexed, at least I know I am, about this sort of polarization of whether or not requiring masks is something that should be done. You know, we've got to do our part in trying to increase the usage of it. And I think this is going to be a very effective program. And then also working with the municipalities to enforce it in a way that they've decided to enforce the, those executive orders to require masks in the city and East Point. And, you know, considering, you know, whether or not we just do that across the entire jurisdiction. You know, some kind of informal conversations I have had with people around the region leads me to believe that others of our jurisdictions were probably making similar moves about requiring masks. So that is my presentation, sort of where we are with our new normal task force, where we're headed. You know, we're doing a lot of things. We've got a lot of things focused for both of our employees and our customers. We do believe that, you know, the most significant thing that we've done to our customers is changing our bus routes, the elimination of those now 50-some bus routes is a significant impact. We've got to work hard to get back to more normal service. And we do see both mask-wearing, but also just the general trend of the number of people contracting the virus in this region as two numbers, one that needs to go significantly higher around mask-wearing and one that needs to get significantly lower, the contraction of virus, of the virus. lower, that contraction of virus of the virus by by individuals uh needs to be lowered, I think, before we can we can safely um go back to more normal bus service and and be comfortable with with crowds on on buses that that we experience on a regular basis pre-COVID nineteen. So that's the uh presentation on the new normal task force. Hopefully, that gives some some insight into all the things that we're doing, and I suspect there may be a few questions for uh for us.
Do we have some questions?
Yeah, this is Rod Friars, and um I want to say I was so excited to see MARTA's the uh the YouTube videos that they did. Since I'm following MARTA, I get to see those. And uh what you did on the sanitizing spraying of the buses and rail were very, very informative. And I, and that's that the type of things that I would see in my community when we had our community association meeting. And then also the fact that we're giving out masks. I mean, to me, that's a trendsetter, and that's the things you have to do in order to kind of change the way people start to experience their ridership and even uh in our in our community and in our and our businesses also. Uh I think when senior management wear masks, everybody's wearing masks, then it just makes you feel comfortable, you know, that they should be wearing masks and it's a matter of performance. So anyway, those two videos were very popular. I didn't get a chance to show them to my community, and I was glad to see them. So thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Rita.
Uh, hi. My quick question is, now that masks, as of yesterday, is mandatory in Atlanta, is there a plan in case there is an issue if a patron boards a bus or attempts to board without a mask?
Yeah, you so so, you know, our our understanding of um the enforcement side of it at this point and and um Chief Crayor is is um trying to work with APD to to understand that the the enforcement is really going to be um more of educational enforcement. Um, you know, I'm 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 very hesitant to put our um our frontline employees, particularly bus operators, in a in a clear conflict with people. We're we're, you know, for for reasons that that perplex me, um, we're we're so polarized about this being, the notion of being forced to wear masks. So so this, you know, at this point in time, we're not going to institute sort of a blanket, the bus is not going to stop for you if you're not going to wear a mask. Um, we will do things like making announcements and educating people and letting them know of the requirement. But uh but I think we're we're ways like like, you know, like my understanding that, you know, that the city is, I I don't believe, uh, you know, that they're setting up uh an enforcement with fines or or anything like that to uh to get compliance. So it's 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 more around, the compliance is really around educating people, and uh we will follow suit with that.
Thank you. I agree that our employees should not confront or deny a patron to ride, but I was concerned because I have a couple of calls into the cab asking um if we are following suit or are we looking at the same requirement? So, thank you.
Yeah, you you know, we we need to just talk a little more internally about that, but but it probably makes sense um with with the City of Atlanta having a requirement um, you know, to to just sort of, you know, extend that same concept across the entire system. There's, you know, you know, expecting people to know exactly where they are and crossing county lines and I suspect or or uh, you know, a city line is is probably not a, you know, bit confusing for our customers and employees. So so we're we're going to think some more about that. This is, you know, I don't even know if the mayor has actually signed the executive order yet. I think she's going to sign it at some point today. So more to come on that, and we'll we'll make that um, you know, update everyone through our situation announcements.
Uh, this is Roberta. Um, Jeff, I did have one call um that says that a driver um refused to allow somebody to get on a particular bus, which doesn't make any sense because they're still getting on from the rear, I guess. But what happens if if a driver is faced with with the situation and, you know, for safety, not only of our employees but for the rest of the passengers? Do we have a policy for that yet, or are we working on it?
In terms of mask wearing?
Yes, sir.
Specifically, yeah. So so um, you you know, we're we're really, our our intent is to follow uh and mirror the enforcement strategy that that, you know, the that the jurisdictions that are that are um, you know, making these requirements. And 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 like I said, um, wh- while we're trying to make sure we fully understand the details of that, we believe that it's really around education. So we have, we have not told any employee to deny access, and and at this point in time, we don't intend to. Um, if it becomes something that's that's more formal, more structured by one of our jurisdictions, then I think we'll have to go back um to the drawing boards in in terms of a policy and how our employees will interact with customers. You know, I think the key here is that, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I believe this was College Park.
Okay.
So that, you know, if they refuse to-
More details.
Yeah. If they refuse to put a mask on, just let them ride, right?
That's, that is-
Don't get into a confrontation with them.
Yeah, we're we're not looking for confrontations o- over this issue, uh, but we do want to create some some, you know, make an announcement on the bus or or something like that, just uh to really try and encourage and educate people. So that's that's going to be our posture for now.
Okay, okay. I gotta make a transition. Let me turn this off.
I think someone else had a question.
Yeah, yeah, this is this is Dr. Edman, and and I have to put back on my physician hat right now. And first of all, yeah, I want to qualify my comments with stating that this is such uncharted territory. And so this isn't an indictment of anybody's decision-making or judgment because it is so new, it has never happened in our lifetime, and we need to contextualize everything. That being said, uh, I strongly believe that MARTA, uh, we need to take the lead in terms of setting policy that makes sense. Uh, I understand that we are a product of all of our jurisdictions, but that does not cause us to lose our common sense in terms of setting policy for the riders of MARTA. This is a life and death situation, as everybody knows. Uh, you have these pockets, these hyper-concentrated supercells of of COVID infections that occur that occur in closed spaces, and that's exactly what we what we deal in, is closed spaces, closed buses, closed trains and the like. And it being a life and death situation, the notion of us acceding to a policy that allows a person to come in without a mask and to potentially infect and 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 potentially put the lives at risk of other riders is irresponsible. Uh, it is my strong opinion that we set a policy that protects the public first, and then to the extent that we get pushed back from the state or jurisdictions, then we'll deal with that. But we, as an organization, need to exercise common sense. We should not try to do a double Dutch dance, tightrope walk politicizing this matter. It's clear, this is a deadly virus, it's clear that if somebody doesn't wear a mask, they risk other people who are in closed quarters. We have closed quarters, everybody should wear a mask, and if they don't wear a mask, they should not be allowed to ride. The whole notion of not creating a confrontation, I hear you, nobody wants to create havoc, but the reality is that I do believe, and it's common sense to everybody, that a confrontation is worth the lives of people who may die because somebody comes on a bus or training affects other people. So those are my comments. I strongly suggest that we we revise our policy that is very sensitive to the fact that this is new. You know, we're not going to try to, you know, I think the language needs to be softened up, but what we actually do, in my strong opinion, should be to mandate that everybody who rides on MARTA puts on a mask, and we need to provide those masks for them at every point of entry and exit. And so uh I'm I'm putting that on the record. I know this is an executive session, but uh, Jeff, I'll probably email you something that's very, very succinct and to the point that memorializes my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, this is Alicia Ivy. Um, my question is with regard to our paratransit patrons. How does this distribution apply to them? Um, I do know that, you know, we use subcontract that service out. Um, so how is this working for our paratransit patrons?
Yeah, we we made a decision um weeks, weeks ago, maybe maybe even a month ago, um, that because because of the nature of the 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 close proximity between our employee and our paratransit or mobility patrons, in particular, many of them need assistance in uh boarding or being uh, you know, safely uh, you know, strapped in, um, a wheelchair, wheelchair-bound patron. Um, we made a decision that that we were going to require that. And so um on a on a um mobility van, when uh, well, well, prior prior to making, at the time of making the reservation, uh, the patron is told that they're required to wear a mask, the uh, the mobility rider has a supply, mobility driver has a supply of masks and does require the uh, the the customer to put on a mask as they're getting on the vehicle if they're not wearing one one of their own. So so we did that several weeks ago, um, you know, in advance of this change that we're making now. So there really wasn't a need to extend that distribution out like the way we're doing it here in the rail stations and around our busy bus stops.
Thank you. And also, I do want to support what uh Rod said just a moment ago with regard to um having a policy with regard to masks, because as we all know, that many of our patrons who ride MARTA is overwhelmingly in the minority community and is adversely impacted. Um, in addition to that, um, many people um who ride our services are essential workers. And so we want to make sure that we are protecting all patrons, but specifically making sure to address the needs of those who most need them uh as well. So I just wanted to make sure to weigh in on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Ivy. And this is Freedom, but I agree with what Ms. Ivy and Dr. Edman both said. My concern in this entire process is how you enforce that. And when enforcement comes into play, we're either putting the bus drivers or or law enforcement to enforce it. So that's the part that I think we all struggle with. I think that you probably get a hundred percent agreement. We all need to really encourage masks. It's the enforcement part in today's world that makes it really difficult to figure this out. Anything else?
Yeah.
Freedom, Freedom, this is Dr. Edman. First of all, you know, yeah, I thank you for for basically supporting in concept what it is that that I strongly believe needs to happen. And and again, enforcement aside, uh, we we're we're, we are making a policy right now that is one step below making it mandatory. Uh, and so what I what what I strongly encourage is that we take it step by step, we we make it mandatory that everybody that rides wears a mask, uh, and then we can deal with enforcement issue as it comes down the pipe. I I can tell you again that when I'm sitting back, you know, weighing whether or not the loss of a life is worth the 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 inconvenience of a confrontation with somebody who doesn't want to hear the policy, I'm going to choose the life first, and I think most people will also. So if we set a policy that mandates the mask, and then we'll deal with the fallout as we dealt with everything with this pandemic, it's new, uh, everybody's got to be flexible, we'll have to deal with it.
I I'd like to weigh in. I I I agree with all of this, and I see it as a natural extension of uh the Ride With Respect program that was started in Keith's administration. And um and so we're not going to be able to make a decision about that today, but um I I support it and believe we should.
Madam Chair, this is Rita Scott again. May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with everything that everyone has said here. And on a side note, or very emotionally to say that one of our ATU members, not a MARTA employee, but a Gwinnett County Transit employee, has passed away from COVID nineteen. The funeral services will be held on this Saturday. So we do have to think along the lines of protecting the patrons, the drivers, but we also do have to consider not putting those employees in a predicament of enforcement by having a a method or process of enforcing, but making it mandatory or requirement to ride MARTA that we do wear masks. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, this is Chris. Uh, yeah, I I look forward to us looking at this. Um, uh, I definitely echo the uh concerns and the impact that it would have on the safety of both the operators and the riders. Um, I I do think we need to understand uh the enforcement uh picture. I I do think it is inevitable that that question will come up, and there needs to be um clear guidance and direction from everybody, from the operators to the patrons, uh, to the MARTA police force. So I I I definitely agree with what Rod is saying in terms of the public health imperative. Um, but if it's mandatory, a clear understanding of what happens if, for whatever reason, somebody doesn't want to follow it, that has to be known and and I think communicated upfront. So I think we just need both parts before something like that can be put into place.
I agree with all, everything's been said too. I guess foolish not to wear a mask, but I don't understand the politics of how masks can be politics.
Any anyone else? Okay, Jeff, what's next on the agenda?
Uh, shorter presentation on on uh update around Gwinnett County, if uh if uh we could bring that up real quick. Yeah, so um, sure, many of you or everyone has seen in the news, um, Gwinnett County is is considering a uh a transit referendum, and I just want to bring bring the board up to speed on uh on where where they stand, uh, some actions that uh that need to happen before they authorize a referendum, what what they're intending on doing, how it will affect MARTA, and and where we'll uh intersect with uh trying to get some approval of the Board of Directors around a uh an agreement. So next slide. Just to give a sense, twenty nineteen uh referendum failed fifty-four to 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 fifty-four, and as you can see, it was um pockets of uh, you know, of the uh, of the of the county passed and and others did not. Next slide. Um, so the timeline of of how they've how they have progressed since then, um, back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, they put together a transit plan. Uh, as you can see, March of nineteen had the had the MARTA referendum, which failed. And coming out of that, um, they they had a transit review committee um to really take a a refreshed look at their transit plan um and made some updates to their their transit plan and considered some some new options and um and took that to the Board of Commissioners for review in uh February and April of twenty twenty. for review in February and April of 2020. Chris's organization, the ATL Regional, ATL Board approved in May of 2020, the, the new plan because any, any referendum requires a, with the 930 requires that the, that the transit projects be within the ATL's approved plan. And next slide. So they considered four options, two options of joining the Marta system with or without heavy rail, and then also using the House Bill 930, which is a 30-year up to 1 cent sales tax, one with heavy rail. Without heavy rail, the Commission adopted the plan of, of constructing a heavy rail system and utilizing the, the House Bill 930 legislation as a mechanism to fund the expansion of transit with that heavy rail option in it. So, so they have, they have adopted that as their plan. Next slide. This is a pictorial of, of what that 2020 transit plan looks like. And, and, you know, sort of towards the center of the, of the slide shows the heavy rail extension from, from Doraville Station and, and connecting to a site that, that the county now owns. But there's also significant local and commuter bus services, well as BRT service that will intersect with some of the destinations that are within the Marta jurisdiction, primarily within DeKalb County. So next slide. So just to give you a sense of the portfolio of projects that, that they're advancing, I won't, you know, won't read these, I'll just pause a moment for, for everyone to look at. It's about a $4 billion total and total capital investment, including heavy rail, a significant investment in BRT. Next slide. The operating side of this investment looks like, looks like this. Just to give you a sense of the order of magnitude of, of what they would be doing over that portfolio of, of projects. So next slide. They've put together some assumptions around funding, the local sales taxes, the House Bill 930 sales tax. They have an assumption about collecting some federal dollars and then some state and other sources and Fairbox recovery, recovery with a total, you know, funding source of, of $12 billion. So a significant investment by Gwinnett County in, in transit. Next slide. So several actions have been done, and I just, just thought it would be helpful to kind of articulate them. The, the ATL Board adopted the, the amendments to the, to the plan so that there was conformity with, with Gwinnett's desire, and so that they could potentially move forward with, with the, with the strategy that they've selected. That was 99 projects. Gwinnett advanced fiscally constrained project list of 82 for the, the actual referendum, and the ATL Board has approved that. So that would allow on the to-do list for Gwinnett County Commission to hold a vote and to authorize a referendum using the 930 language. And it is their intent on having, assuming the, the Commission has not done that yet, but assuming it passes, they would have a, a vote at the November election. And in order to, you know, there, there's, there's a need and a desire for, for us to, to negotiate, I, I shouldn't say a contract, because major difference between what was required when Gwinnett was attempting to join Marta. When Gwinnett was attempting to, to join Marta, the citizens were act, were actually voting on the, allowing the contract to be entered into and, and really to allow that contract to go forward. Here, what we need to do is really to, to lay out through, through an agreement, through a contract, some of the relationships that we need to have, particularly around the heavy rail extension. House Bill 930 does require that Marta is the operator of the heavy rail system. And, and, and therefore we have, you know, we have an obligation to be the operator. Gwinnett County through the, through House Bill 930 has an obligation to provide a funding source for the construction and, and operation of that heavy rail system. And we want to have some clarity around roles and responsibilities through an agreement with Gwinnett County. The other piece of it is, is that we also know that there'll be a significant investment by, by Gwinnett County will bring a lot more service into our service areas, particularly at Doraville Station, but also at Indian Creek. And we want to make sure that we have the basis for an agreement when they do add that additional service so that, so that fair share of the operations and maintenance of those facilities and/or, you know, improvements, capital improvements or ongoing infrastructure improvements to maintain those, those facilities are paid for in a fair way by Gwinnett County. So, you know, we're, we're having some preliminary conversations with, with Gwinnett County now. I know Chairwoman Hardinge had, had a, a conversation a little while ago, and maybe a couple of conversations with, with Chairwoman Nash. And, you know, I think we're in a, we're in a, you know, we're in a, an area of trying to understand and, and make sure that the, the roles and responsibilities are fair. Clearly, risk needs to lie in the appropriate party. So any sort of divvying of responsibilities, we'll, we'll consider that, and we will continue to, to work through those, those issues. And ultimately, you know, need to bring a, you know, an, an intergovernmental agreement to the Marta Board for your approval to, to allow us to have a, a basis for a, a more detailed contract in the future after a referendum passes. And like I said earlier, that would be on November 3rd, which is when the vote would happen. So next slide. Think that's, I think that's it. So that's, that's where we are. Just wanted to bring you up to speed if anyone has any questions about what's going on. I'm sure there may be some context that, that Chris might want to bring to the board from the perspective of, of the ATL. Encourage that if Chris has anything to share, but open to, open it up to some questions or comments.
Any questions?
Well, sure, just a couple of comments. So actually Jeff did an excellent job of, of bringing you up to speed on the highlights of the process. And yes, the ATL Board did meet this morning to give approval to the proposed referendum list. Next action goes back to the Commission to ultimately determine if they're going to put it on the November ballot. A couple of things, and this is in relation to the overall Gwinnett referendum list. It would have the net effect of, of increasing the amount of jobs within Gwinnett that are within a quarter mile of a local bus stop or half mile of BRT or heavy rail from its present level of 35% to a increased level of 63%. It would also increase the percentage of low-income population that has access to fixed route transit, taking it from its current 35% level up to 44%. And increase the percent of minority population with access by 39%. Their, their projects touch actually four counties, Gwinnett, DeKalb, Hall, and Fulton County. So it certainly regional and has impact of connecting people in multiple counties, you know, for trips going back and forth amongst them. And as, as Jeff pointed out, the heavy rail component, the only way that works is for an agreement with Marta to operate and obviously be involved in the construction, ongoing operation and maintenance of that, of that component. So I'm certainly available, my staff's available. If there's other specific questions as to the analysis that took place at the ATL. But other than that, I will turn it back over. And if there's any questions that Jeff or Rita wants me to field, happy to do so.
Do we have other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is, my understanding is that this will go to the Gwinnett County Commission on 7/21 to vote November election. Is that correct?
I, I believe that's the date.
I believe, I believe that is the date. Does that sound right to you, Chris?
Yeah, I, I know it definitely has to go back. I wasn't sure of what the specific date was, but yes, it's, it's going back and forth on the Commission in July.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff. Do you have anything else on the agenda?
No, I just, yes, just very briefly, we have, you had mentioned the event at the Justice Center this Saturday. And then we also have a Marta Accessibility Committee at, at headquarters from, from 10:00 to 11:30 on July 14th. And then another Riders Advisory Council via WebEx on Tuesday, August 5th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. So that, that concludes my, my update. So thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to add before we go? We need a motion to go into executive session. For the purposes of real estate.
Still move.
In, in litigation, Madam Chair.
Jonathan, what?
For real estate and litigation.
Oh, real estate and litigation. I apologize, okay. And I heard Ms. Ivy.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I can't grip it.
Okay. Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Okay, we are going to leave this session and go log into the executive session WebEx. [Silence]
Jim, does it say yours is currently in executive session?
Yeah, I think they've got that up there for anybody that comes into this meeting.
That's okay, we're all in the right spot, that's all I care about.
Yep.
Madam Chair, Robertson.
Thank you.
We made the transition.
It appears that we are, do not jinx us.
Oh, and Frida, allow me to say thank you to everybody for their well wishes during my recent health issues. And also thank you for your good wishes regarding my new assumed position.
Hi, we're glad that you're doing well, Jim.
Absolutely.
Amen.
Amen. Jim, I'm out the loop. I didn't know you were sick. I'm glad you're better. The second thing, what's your new position?
Um, well, I'm still running the CID in Buckhead, but now I'm the president, also the president of the Buckhead Coalition.
Congratulations, man.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, congratulations, Jim.
Kurt, how are we doing? Do we have everyone?
We definitely have a number of people, let me put this through here.
Jim, are you trying to catch up with Chris Tomlinson, the number of titles?
Not trying.
I was about to say, welcome to the club of many hats.
Yes, yes. Yeah, that's true. You never gonna catch Chris on some titles.
I don't think so.
So, Ms. Hardage, we have a large number of members. We have to go through the list to figure out who is still not attached to this meeting.
Jonathan, are you on?
Yes, Chairwoman, I am on.
Okay, are you going to read the public comments?
Public comment, yes.
Okay, I'll call on you, thank you.
Whoever's got control of the screen, we've got the work session's agenda up.
Yes. We have everyone with the exception of Mr. Glover, he's going to call in.
Okay, can we get started?
Yes, we were in the work session.
We're starting the board meeting.
We haven't officially ended the work session.
I move we end it.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Is there anyone that opposes moving the work session? Are there any extensions? Okay, the work session is ended. And we are moving into the Board of Directors of MARTA meeting. And can you call the roll, please?
Okay, Madam Chair, would you like me to go ahead and call the roll?
Yes, please.
Roberta Abdul Salam.
Present.
Robbie Ash. Jim Durick.
Present.
Roderick Edmund.
Present.
Bill Floyd.
Present.
Roderick Frierson.
Present.
Ryan Glover. Mary Griffin.
Here.
Rita Hardage. Alicia Ivy.
Present.
Russell McMurray.
Present.
Al Pond.
Brownson.
Rita Scott. Rita.
Present.
Christopher Thomason.
Present.
And Thomas Worthy.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have 13 board members on the line.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt, can you read our public comment information?
Yes, Chairwoman Hardage, we have three public comments. They came in via email from one Sean Davis, a Mikel Hampton, and Ed Williams. Those comments will be attached to the minutes of the board meeting and sent to all board members. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 11th MARTA Board of Directors?
Worthy moves.
Second, Ivy.
Do we have any opposition? Is there anyone that would like to abstain? The minutes are approved. Can we hear from the Planning and Capital Programs Committee report? Dr. Edmund.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry. I need to see my report. I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Can somebody post it up?
It's in your packet.
Well, I apologize, I don't have my packet in front of me.
We're pulling up that document just a moment.
I appreciate it. Okay, there we go. Give me a minute. I'll go find it.
Oh, keep scrolling.
It's coming up.
Yeah, it is.
Wait a minute.
Operations and Safety.
No, these are the minutes from the last meeting.
Keep going. Keep scrolling.
Keep scrolling.
Yeah.
I, I can't do anything. I can't.
Fast speed five.
All right, there we go. All right. Madam Chair, the Planning and Capital Program Committee met on June the 25th, 2020, and approved the following resolutions. A resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for on-claims analysis, RFP P47040. And a resolution authorizing the modification of a contract, L46709, claims analysis. I respectfully request approval of these resolutions.
Jim Duritt will second.
Are there, are there, is there any discussion? Does he, are there any opposition? Is there any extensions? It passes.
All right, committee received the following briefing of Capital Programs Governance Process Update briefing. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Edmund. Mr. Griffin, the Operations and Safety Committee.
Madam Chair, the Operations and Safety Committee met on June 25th, 2020, and approved the following resolutions. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of eligibility assessment services for MARTA mobility paratransit operations. B, resolution authorizing a war of a contract for the procurement of parking lot sweeping services, B45532. I request approval of these resolutions.
Jim Duritt will second.
Any discussion? Are there any opposition? Any extensions? It passes.
The committee received the following briefing, Station Transformation. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Frierson, the Business Management Committee report.
Madam Chair, the Business Management Committee met on June 25th, 2020, and approved the following resolutions. Resolution authorizing the modification and the contractual authorization for the cloud-based learning management system, RFP P42158. I request approval of these resolutions.
Thomas Worthy seconds.
Any discussion? Do we have any? I'm sorry, any opposition? Okay. If, if, it passes. Thank you. Any extensions? I'm sorry, I didn't ask extensions. But are there any extensions? It passes.
The committee received the following briefings, briefing on the FY 2020 April financial highlights and key financial performance indicators. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Frierson. Do we have any other matters that need to come before the board today? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hi, everybody.
Bye.
All right. Talk to you later.